Good evening and welcome to tonight's School Board Candidates Forum. Featuring individuals running to serve on the Linmar Community School District's Board of Directors. My name is Kevin King and I have the honor of serving as tonight's moderator. I'm a native of Grinnell, Iowa, and graduated from Central College in Pella. And I've worked in the banking and finance world, all in Cedar Rapids, for the last thirty-six years. I'm currently the Market President for Onward Bank and Trust in Marion and Cedar Rapids. I have some experience on a school board as a former trustee of Kirkwood Community College. Kirkwood's trustees are elected as part of the regular school board elections. So I know from personal experience what it takes to knock on doors, get the required number of signatures on your petitions, and campaign after work and on weekends. Serving on a school board can be one of the most challenging volunteer positions ever. And I'd like to offer my personal thanks to each of you for making our community a better place. School boards play a unique role in not only school district governance, but also they have a broad impact on the citizens and communities they represent. To effectively execute their responsibilities, school board members must clearly understand district governance and have a strong commitment to advancing student outcomes. Furthermore, it's important for school board members to understand how district decisions impact not only students and staff, but also the community at large. This year's voters will elect four of these six candidates, seven candidates, excuse me, to fill an at-large seat. The candidates include Barry Buckholz, Bob Gabel, Britt T. Ania Maury. Did I get it close? For future reference, I'll refer to her as Britt. And she told me that was okay. Sandra Nelson, Clark Weaver, and Jeffrey Wisdo. It should be noted that incumbent Tim Eisenberg, who is not here tonight, is running unopposed to serve a different at-large seat. Tonight candidates will be asked a variety of predetermined questions. Additionally, we ask members of the audience to submit questions by writing them on the note cards that are available in the room. If you don't have a note card and would like to submit a question for consideration, we'll make sure to get one to you. Unfortunately, with the limited time we have this evening, we cannot guarantee that all questions will be able to be asked. And we'll do our best to get through as many questions as possible. We will not accept questions attempted to be presented verbally from members of the audience or any media. Please use the provided cards. We'll be presenting questions on a rotating basis, meaning each candidate will have the opportunity to have both the first and last remarks throughout the evening. Responses will be limited to sixty seconds, and we ask the candidates to pay attention to our time cards in the front of the room to help us move through as many questions as possible. Let's begin by asking each candidate to introduce themselves and provide us with a little background as to why they believe they're the best candidate to serve the Linmar School District. I'll begin with Barry, and again, I'll ask you to keep your responses within the sixty-second timeframe.
Do you want to go background first?
Yes, please.
Okay. Like you said, my name's Barry Buckholz. I've served on this board in the past. I've been involved in the Linmar School District for sixteen years, or longer than that, but on different boards for sixteen years. And I was the president for three. But the reason that I wanted to run for the board was mainly my kids, my children, my grandchildren. I have three sons that went through the Linmar District. Two of my daughter-in-laws went through the district. I now have nine grandchildren. Three of them are in the district now. So that passion to the community, passion to be able to kind of give back. And I've been in the insurance, the investment business in the area. I've been doing it for thirty-six years. And it's, I feel one of my strengths, first of all, is to help lead the board. And second of all, my community involvement and the networking that I have in the community and all the people that I'm able to connect with.
Hi, my name is Bob Gabel, and I'm running for the board. Well, first, let me say I've been in the Linmar District for roughly twenty-five years. I have two daughters that are graduate, and I'm kind of the old guy with young kids. I have two sons, eight and five. That'll be, one's in the district and the second one soon will be. I'm running, I've worked for Collins Aerospace for over thirty years. And I'm running to the board in part to give back, in part to support the kids and students that are going through the thing, and be a balance on the organization or on the board between current members of the board and members of the community. I don't have a background in education, but I do have a background in working complex problems and working to get consensus with people. So I'm bringing that to the board, that experience in my industry. So, thank you.
I'm Britt Ania Maury. Britt is a lot easier, so going forward, Britt is good. I've lived in the district for about three years with my family. We moved here specifically for the school district. We have a first grader, Arthur, over at Wilkins. And my background professionally, I've worked for an education nonprofit for about fifteen years. I'm the Director of Communications. And we develop curriculum and programs for career and college readiness. We work with all of the high schools in the state, and our programming is free. We also work with students and parents to develop plans for life after high school. And through those experiences, I've seen the impact and the opportunity that solid education creates for students and the difference it makes for families. I have a passion for education through those experiences. And what I bring to the board is an understanding of education, the impact that it can make, and the difference that leadership through involvement through your community can give to students. So I'm here for students. I'm here to make a difference and to support the staff and to help solve big problems, which I do every day, working for a nonprofit with very little money. We make big things happen with very limited resources. So I can bring that to the board as well. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, my name is Sandra Nelson. And I started my career at Linmar as a teacher. I worked at Bowman Woods as a second grade teacher for forty years. I retired from there and promptly, within a couple months, got on the school board four years ago. And since then, I've been in a very active role, doing lots of things for the district. And I've done a lot of keeping in touch with people within the district, teachers, looking at students and where they're going and where we need to take them. I always think when I'm making decisions, what's best for the students overall? Where is our district going? I want to be a forward thinker and make sure that we're planning ahead for growth, which is one of the things that we're looking at all the time. So I would like to be a member of the school board for another term, and I'm asking you for that vote.
My name's Clark Weaver. I've been in the district since nineteen seventy-four as a teacher, as a coach. I'm still actively involved in a lot of the activities that the school has. I'm on a scholarship committee, and I'm on the Athletic Hall of Fame Committee. So the students and staff are the most important thing. Our district is a growing district, which presents problems, and I think our board has dealt with those. But it's going to be an ever-increasing, nice problem to have, okay? Students and staff are the number-one priority. Marion is a growing city. There is a vision for that growing. Linmar is a big part of that vision. And I want to make sure that we keep going in the right direction and have a positive interaction for our students as they grow. And so when they cross that stage, they have something to give back to our community, to the district, and thanking for their parents. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Wisdo. I am running for the school board because I believe that our job as a society is to educate our children and give them the best hope for the future. I'm the son of a factory worker and a disabled mother. I have two doctor degrees. I've only been able to do that is through my education. Through the importance of education in my life, I've been able to lift myself up. And I think every child should have the opportunity to do that as well. I've served on several different boards in my professional life. Right now, I currently work as a compliance attorney. So I understand the regulatory environment that schools and government have to work through. I think I would be a good candidate to help move the board forward and create the greatest schools possible in all of Iowa here in the Linmar District.
Thank you. For the second question, I'll start with Bob, and then just rotate back to the end here. So the second question for this evening is how will you build consensus and community support around the work of the school district? Who do you bring with you to the table?
We're chuckling just because we were sitting there thinking about what's the right seat to be in and who to get caught with the first question. And I guess I was in the wrong seat. You know, I'm a firm believer in building consensus on everything that we do. I think when you're confronted with a problem, you bring people who are stakeholders for that problem. When it concerns the school district, it's obviously the students, the teachers, their parents, and trying to bring them together. Now, obviously, it depends on what the issue is that you're working on. But I think those are always the key people to bring. I think my skills in building consensus, listening to people with the, you know, never forgetting the objective in mind, which is to graduate students that are well-prepared to take on life in front of them. That's kind of where I'm at.
So building consensus, you have to talk to the people that are doing the work. So for me, I am a problem solver. Working in education right now, you have to talk to the stakeholders. So I view the role of the school board as we're the voice of the community. You vote us in, so we're representing the community. So you have to talk to the community about what they see. But you also have to talk to the people doing the work. The educators that we have, they have a role. They have the training. You have to talk to them about how things should be implemented, how things should work, and see their sense, their side of things. I'm very good at working with educators. I've been doing that for fifteen years. You don't have successful programs if you don't talk to the people doing the work. You also have to take into account how the students impact, how they interact with whatever the initiative is. And so taking into account how they're going to interpret what you're trying to do is incredibly important. Students have a voice, and they have an opinion for a reason. They are a stakeholder, and we should bring them to the table as well.
Building consensus is very important, and you have to talk to everyone that's involved. That would be the students, that would be the parents, that is, the teachers, everyone that you want to have come together to believe in what you're trying to do. You determine what is going on in the school by what the needs are out there. So you have to talk to the people that live it and know. It's important also when you're talking about trying to get some information out, that you're willing to listen. You can't just be the talking person, you have to be the listener. When you listen, you often find out more information. Once you've listened, you help people figure out. If you don't have the answers, you try to direct them to where that needs to be. And sometimes, you're the person that helps direct it to where it needs to go. It's just really important that you are communicative to all the people involved and that you show that you care.
In dealing with such issues like this, I think the big thing that you need to focus on is communication and transparency. It's not the board against the thing, it's the board that's trying to listen to, like I said, their students, the teachers. I've been blessed to have a lot of my former students that are still teaching in the district or administrators in the district. And so you have that openness and honesty that I think is vital for the communication. After all, our main purpose is students and staff. If you do not listen to those, if you do not get those idea, you can't get a consensus on maybe possible problems or if we're going in the right direction. And once you have that type of communication, then people can work together. And that's what the school district is all about. It's kind of like a family in trying to engage as many people as you can, be as positive as you can, listen attentively, and go from what you see. Thank you.
As far as consensus and community support goes, I think in order to create exceptional things, you need buy-in from everybody. And those, everybody includes not only the teachers and the staff and the students, but parents and also the community at large. I think as we move forward in education, there are some vital partnerships that can be happening in the community to create internships or work programs for students as they go out. In order to create possibly a STEM academy within the Linmar School District, we have some great employers in the area that can help support that, whether that be Collins Aerospace or Integrated DNA Technologies down in Corville. There are great opportunities for school districts to partner with employers and other entities in the district to help educate our students and prepare them for life beyond their high school education.
Okay, so basically consensus of a community. And I just think it's very, very important, the leadership. One of the main reasons I decided to run for the board was the leadership that the district presently has, both from the school board down to all the administrators. And in the involvement that I've had in the past, we have never had the issues that have brought as many parents to us or things that couldn't be settled. And then as a board, it's just so critical that you have a unified front. You stand, because if you gather all the information you need, you bring everything together, it really answers all of your questions. And, you know, our role is basically to govern, because we're a volunteer just like anybody else in the district. So we're here to govern the district and put the trust and the respect and the leadership that the organization has.
Thank you. LaSheila is a little late getting here tonight because she experienced a medical issue, which is causing her to run a little bit late. A quick question I have for the member of the audience, or for the audience. Would it be helpful for you if I were to repeat the question midway through the responses? Or are you good with just the one-time question? Okay. Your attention span is much longer than mine. The next question, I'll start with Britt. Do you believe annual state funding increases in the neighborhood of one to two percent are the new norm regardless of which political party is in power? If so, how will districts need to fundamentally change how they do business?
Funding is a great question to be the first to answer. I do think it's probably the norm regardless of who's in charge, unless you have a swing majority going one way. I think they're going to land between one and two percent in state funding. Funding is always going to be a challenge. Even when we were at three or four percent, it's a challenge because education is changing. The way that we have to educate our students is changing, the way we have to approach things is changing. So we have to, regardless of what funding comes from the state, we have to look at what are the needs of the students and what are the needs of the faculty and staff, and how can we do the best that we can with the funds that we have available? If we're constantly looking at what are we going to have this year versus next year and not looking at, that's not the point. The point is, how do we use what we do have each year to the best of our ability to serve our students and to serve our educators, making sure they have the professional development they need to be successful in the classroom, and that our students have what they need in their classroom to achieve the goals of the standards of the state? Funding, it's going to come, it's going to go. We have to focus on what we can control.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Do you believe annual state funding increases in the neighborhood of one to two percent are the new norm regardless of which political party is in power? If so, how will districts need to fundamentally change how they do business?
Well, it seems that the more we ask for, the less we have and the less we get. So I think the state has had some shift in their belief in education as being a priority. So we have to deal with it accordingly. Of course, we always want more money for our kids. Of course, we do. But what we have to do then is prioritize. What is it that's really important for us to be effective and to make sure that kids have a good education? So you have to look at the things somewhat downrange as to where we want to go, and then work backward to think, okay, if we're only going to have this amount of money and we only have this available, what can we spend when to make it work the best long-term?
Well, I certainly hope it doesn't stay at one to two percent. I think we've been getting the short end of the stick for a while, and that goes to our voters. We need to keep them informed and communicate them as to what is really important. And if our students and staff aren't the most important thing, I'd like somebody to explain that to me. Obviously, when you get into this, we're governed by the state legislature on what monies can be spent and how they can be spent and where they can be spent. You can't draw them from someplace else and put them in there because this is our big need now. So we have to follow the parameters listed by that governing unit. But as we get closer to dealing with this type of budget, we all have short-term plans and long-term plans. Our long-term plans are based on what the state's telling us. And when it's an election year, sometimes those people that are wanting to get elected tell you different things than what actually happens. But it boils down to the same thing, and I know it is repetitive. But we got, with what we have, we got to do what's best for the students and the staff. And then that's the way it's going to be, the district will be successful and carry on.
Thank you.
One to two percent may be the reality. But moving forward, what is the important component of teaching our students? Is the education the important part? Is new facilities important? Ultimately, what leads us to being the greatest district that we can be, the best district in Iowa, that's what will drive the decisions. I think when every decision that's made, you have to look at it from a fiscally responsible way. Is there a better way that we can do this? Is there a more affordable way we can do this? Just because we've done this in the past doesn't mean we need to continue doing it in the same manner. There's a chance to look at some of the things that have been done, and can we alter them moving forward to save some money to put into different programs where it's needed?
Hi, I'd like to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak here. I know I'm running late, and I thank you for your patience. As far as with funding, my experience in the public sector deals primarily with municipalities. And I believe from, when you're looking at municipalities, the cost of increase for living is at about three percent that locally for public employees that are at the city level. And so I can't imagine even, you know, moving from that field, I mean, that percentage to one or two percent. And so when considering that, I would like for us to look at, you know, one, professional development. And, you know, I would say with that strategy, looking at what are other communities doing, what are the best practices, and what makes sense for us. And through professional development, you have an opportunity to connect with people from different parts of the state, different parts of the U.S., and you can problem-solve with those entities and individuals. And so I just think that, you know, also if human resources is brought to the table, you know, just considering what is the succession plan looks like. And so I know that in this current climate, it's about, you know, people focus more on their one-year plan versus the strategic plan, which is about five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think one to two percent is going to be the normal, I'm sorry to say. But when you look at the whole picture, you know, eighty-five percent of the budget of the district is staffing and payroll. So to really cut back and to cut corners is really a challenge. A few years back, we went through a ten percent across-the-board budget cut, and we learned a lot through that process. And any way you look at that, that's tough to recover from. And, you know, what corners do you cut and what do you do with that? But as we move forward, and the silo one-cent sales tax has been very, very critical in this district to be able to expand, to be able to get the facilities that we need. Because needless to say, you know, the staffing is critical. And moving forward, I think it's going to be a challenge because there aren't as many people going into administration, there aren't as many people going into teaching. And that's going to be real critical that we're able to fund those folks and to attract them to our district, because needless to say, we're a very good district, and we feel like that that's a very important piece of it is our teachers.
I guess the easy answer is to say that one and two percent appears to be the norm for the coming forward. Everything in life is about priorities, whether it's at the state level and the budgets and the money that are given to education. The voters determine that by the people they put into office. What can we control and what can we do at the school board level? I, part of my background within the company is a thing called lean, something that we do. We spend a lot of time, we talk about looking for ways, setting priorities. I think part of what I want to bring to the board, if I'm fortunate enough to get on to, is that background and that knowledge, and how do we get more from what we've got? I don't think money always settles everything. I think it's how we spend the money and what we spend it on. I think being judicious in what we do and making sure we don't lose sight of the objective, which is the education of the kids, and not try to, you know, overdo anything. There is a limit to the money that we're going to get, and how we spend it is important. And I do feel that we can get more with what we get, what we have.
Thank you. Sandra, do you see opportunities for the district to partner with other public stakeholders such as the city of Marion or even adjacent school districts to realize operational efficiencies?
Well, actually, we've already done some discussing about that. Just, first of all, you have to know what the city is doing and where the expansion is, the growth and all of that. So you have to do a lot of talking and listening with them. We attend the city council meetings to keep abreast of what's happening, and just talk with the members of the council. Also, Marion School District is near us, and they have some great things that are happening there. And we do here, too. And one thing that's coming forth is they had some students that wanted to take ag classes, of which we had had some availability. So we're going to be allowing some of them to do that. I think it's really important that we look at ways to streamline and look at what we both have or all of us have to offer each other and see where we can put our efforts together.
In our unique situation, which we have two school districts in a great city, one of the things that I think we have to keep in mind that we are open-minded and communicating and transparent as to what both districts need. I think there's a lot of sharing that could take place. Sandra alluded to the ag science department, which the board okayed. But there's other things I think possibility. I think everybody in here that has had children in the district is quite aware of transportation. There's a lot of times that transportation, both school districts are going in the same direction. We have met with the city council and the Marion School Board together and discussed different sharing things. And they had an interest in our transportation, as I said before. Linmar District has moved to propane gas, which is a cheaper method, so that helps also. So as we looked at this, we're not close to what Cedar Rapids is doing and Prairie are doing. And anything that we can learn and grasp from some other district that fits our district, that's best for our students and staff, is always open for consideration.
I think partnering with public and even private stakeholders in the area is very important, and I think it's wise. When there's some mutually beneficial areas that we can work with them, I think that's great. But I also think the board needs to keep in mind that it has a fiscal responsibility to taxpayers in Linmar School District. The reality is, the Linmar School District is probably the big brother compared to the Marion School District. The Linmar School District shouldn't be subsidizing other programs. We should look at it and make sure that it's fiscally responsible to do programs and make sure it benefits the students of the Linmar School District. But there's great possibilities to do sharing with the city, with other public entities as well.
As far as strategic partnerships, whether it's public-to-public or public-private partnerships, they need to, I guess, to be successful in that regard is you have to make sure that the partnership makes sense. For example, there is the programming that's provided by Business Horizons through the Iowa Association of Businesses. And so that's a summer program that, you know, exposes students to opportunities, not just, you know- just, you know, from a traditional education, but also they have an opportunity to understand what it means to start a business. As we're moving through the next few years, we have to consider what does education look like? You know, does it have the same value whether it's a college degree or just having an associate's degree? And so, when considering that, I think it's important that we have a connection with the business industries. We can therefore forecast issues and make sure that our students are ready and prepared to be competitive in the workforce. It is an economic imperative that we see opportunities that make sense. And that's pretty, I can go on, but I'm very passionate about that.
Okay. You know, opportunities and partnerships, I think it's very critical as a large school district that we allow smaller school districts nearby to take advantage, to utilize some of the programs that we have because, you know, it'll enhance our program along with helping students in those districts. And I just think partnerships are so critical. And then, the next step of that, which has been alluded to a couple of times, but are trades in the area, whether you're an electrician, a plumber, a furnace, heating and air conditioning and those, and manufacturing are really struggling getting young folks to go into that industry. And I really think that's critical as we move forward because there are some students, you know, we have a very good academic program, but there are some students that academically maybe aren't holding up and maybe would be better off into the trades. And there are industries and businesses in the community that would welcome that opportunity.
Yeah, I think with any relationship, whether it's with another district or the business, there needs to be a strategic vision that calls that off. If we talk about doing agricultural things with Marion, that's probably a good thing for the community. You would hope that there'd be a trade that maybe, when you have programs that aren't quite large enough to self-sustain themselves by working together, you can make the program happen. You would hope that if we do this with Marion, maybe there's something Marion has that Lenmar can take advantage of that separate we can't do, but together we can kind of develop a win-win. I think as Barry said, working with the community, I do think, I own a bunch of rental, well, not a bunch, I own a few rental houses in the area and I resonate strongly with trying to get help in the trades. Not everybody wants to go to college. There's a lot of good jobs out there for people who are electricians, plumbers, you know, those kind of things. So, anything we can do to help those kids who maybe don't want to go to college but want to earn a good living and have a good trade, I think working with other businesses for shadow or mentorship, those kind of things would be an excellent partnership to have.
The district has done a great job already with establishing these partnerships. One of the most commendable is the partnership with Medco and the Community Promise where they work with the community employers to come in and talk to students at high school level about the careers. They take an assessment, they figure out where their path goes. That leads to the job shadows and internships, which is a partnership through Workplace Learning at Kirkwood Community College. And that links our kids to potential career pathways. It links them to job shadows and internships where they're learning about trade opportunities. They're learning whether they need a certificate or a degree or a four-year degree. Do they need to go to college? Do they need an apprenticeship? So, I think that those partnerships are vital for the success of not just our district and our students, but the community. Our community is only going to get better with a better education. Our kids are our future. And the more we invest in those partnerships between the city, between other districts, makes the community stronger, makes our students stronger, offers them more opportunities. And for me, that's a win-win.
Thank you. This is an audience question, which I'll have Clark kick off. Do you support teachers' right to collective bargain, bargaining?
As an educator for thirty-six years, yes, I do. I think one of the nice things that we have done as a board, there was an article in the Gazette, January fifteenth of twenty nineteen, that even stated the board's commitment for collective bargaining. It said that the Lenmar School District was the only school district in the corridor that allowed all the permissives on the collective bargaining issue. I think that made a statement, not only to our students, but it said it made a statement to our staff. And it would be hard for me as an educator for that long a time to go against that. It's an opportunity for the staff to sit down with the board and air out issues that they may have, talk back and forth, give and take before we do get down to the final collective bargaining issues. But, I think it's vital that we get back to that even from the state legislature point of view.
Yes, I do. This is an issue that I did a lot of research on here in the last few weeks. As the law was passed and it went through the Iowa Supreme Court, one of the issues that came up was that districts can bargain, as Clark had said, permissively about certain issues. I would be in support of a policy from the board saying, yes, we're gonna do that. We're gonna bargain about all of these issues that are important to teachers that we possibly can. I think in order to build those exceptional schools, the best school district in Iowa, we need to have partnerships with our teachers and with the staff and with the parents and with everyone. We have to work together to get there. Of course, contract negotiations are adversarial by nature, but they don't have to be bitter. We have an opportunity and we have a responsibility to protect the taxpayers and be, do a fiduciary responsibility there. But, at the same time, we want to work with our teachers to get them the best possible working environment we can and give them everything they need to be the best teachers in Iowa.
Yes, I'm gonna pull from my experience with serving as the chief diversity officer and the civil rights director for the city of Cedar Rapids and also the director for Marion. And my experience has been when parties come together and there's a common thing that needs to get done or a common issue, first you have to get past the positions that people are holding. Having some type of process, whether it's through mediation, but usually with collective bargaining, there's a, it's a similar approach. The concern becomes what makes sense? How can everyone involved in the process get, build consensus versus just the one-out, one are done or, you know, one person feel that they are disadvantaged through the process? And so, I would say, in working for civil rights, we had a mediation process that was similar where we would investigate complaints against schools, complaints against height, I'm sorry, complaints against employers and housing providers. And through that process, we were able to get people to come to some type of resolution that more importantly suited the community's interests.
Thank you. Barry, do you support teachers' right to collective bargain?
You know, collective bargaining, you know, it was put in place for a very good reason. And I think it was back in the early seventies in Iowa when it was actually put in place for the public teachers and the public employees. And as a district, and I think I'll just echo what Clark said, Lenmar School District and the eight years I served on the board, there was never much discussion at the table, the board table, about collective bargaining because the negotiations were going on behind the scenes, they were always running very smooth. And once again, we know as a district that if teachers want some good planning time, if they want the right working conditions, if they want class sizes, we all know that's critical and the district is doing everything in their power to make that work. And part of that is time management and part of that is utilizing your planning time. But, with that said, if we're going to attract good teachers and if we're gonna attract good leadership in our organization, we feel that we need to stay on top of that and we need to follow through and have the best, the best package that we can have.
I think that obviously the right answer and the easy answer is yes. I think people should be able to determine how they want to be represented in their organizations. And apparently, obviously, the teachers in Lenmar and elsewhere have decided that they want to have the union represent them and I would be totally supportive of that. I think as long as the two groups work together and work through issues, it's at the betterment for the district to have a group to work with, discuss how we can be a better district, you know, what's the issues that the teachers are facing and how to bring those forward and address them and use each other as the mechanism to communicate where we want to be and what our plans are. If there's pitfalls in that, let's bring it forward and have a discussion with the group.
I attended the district's strategic planning session, the community opened, and that was the first question I asked when we got to the third part of the strategic plan where it was talking about commitment to staff is what was the district's reaction to the reduction of collective bargaining at the state level? I was very happy to hear that the district saw the value in having those rights. Collective bargaining is essential. It's not just about being able to talk about how much you're gonna make and your planning time, it's about knowing that your employer values you and being able to go to work and think about educating students and not worrying about, am I gonna have enough time? Do they care? Am I worthy in this district? How do they feel about me? If the district puts their faith in the staff and they say, we value you, we're going to have these conversations, that takes a lot of stress and anxiety out of our educators and lets them focus on what's important, educating our students and putting in the time to create successful outcomes. So, yes, collective bargaining is incredibly important and I would continue to push for the district to be above the state and continue offering everything on the list.
I believe collective bargaining is definitely a process that's necessary for everyone, as you mentioned, to feel like they're, they have everything that they're thinking about under control. Everyone needs to have a voice at the table. And when you have collective bargaining, it offers that. Now, we at Lenmar were faced by looking at what would the legislature put before us and we chose to honor our teachers and our other staff in many ways in order to keep the permissives there and so that they knew that we cared about them as teachers and as other staff, that they could just go out and do their job. And I think that's really important. We do support our staff, they need to help determine their own future and by having a way to voice it, it makes so much more sense than them to not have say of what they do.
Thank you. Jeffrey, last year voters approved a fifty-five million dollar bond issued to fund two new intermediate schools that are currently under construction. Do you believe the district has the right plan in place to guide future facility decisions and needs?
I think that's an incredibly difficult question to think about what's gonna happen in twenty or twenty-five years. Students need space, teachers need space. It breaks my heart to see students in trailers at Indian Creek. My son goes to Indian Creek and he's in fourth grade. Next year, he'd be in a trailer without the new schools. I think for a district of our size and of our economic breakdown, that's shameful, quite honestly. I don't know why the buildings didn't pass before. I know we tried to pass a bond referendum and it didn't work so well. It got passed, so I guess that's wonderful that we got it done. Seems like we're a little late on that. But, as we move forward, what are the needs gonna be? I saw the outcome that it looks like we're gonna have ten thousand students in the district in a number of years. We're gonna need some more facilities. That's just the reality. Lenmar District, Marion keeps growing. We need to be ready to do that. That's why fiscal responsibility is so important in every decision made because we have to plan for the growth.
As far as facilities and the changing dynamics of the community, I'll say that whatever change that we need to be, that needs to be made regarding funding, it has to take into consideration the students that are gonna be in that school system. Someone like me, I could talk, someone like me, I'm part of the future face of the way this community is changing. I'm not originally from here, but this is a place that I call home. And more and more I get involved with the community, I see that there are people that like me, that look like me. They're either immigrants, refugees, or just individuals that have a diverse background. I think we need to take that into consideration when we are looking at facilities. And what types of facilities are they ADA accessible? Does it allow for full participation of any student? It's something I think we should really kind of look at and take a look and see what's best.
There are a number of factors involved with this. The first one is, is the district has done a real nice job. We've had a ten-year plan, we've worked that ten-year plan, we've worked around that plan, added to it and developed it. We always have to keep in mind and just to appreciate all the pieces of it, you know, the number of items that we have to look at. We have to look at children with disabilities, we look at children with IEPs, we have to have diversity focus, we have to have all those pieces involved. Now, my opinion is, is the fifth, sixth grade move is gonna help immensely because that gets back to class sizes. Our elementary schools are full. There's, there is not another classroom to add a section. That's back to the portables and all of that. So, to really, quote, add another section, need classrooms. Well, that's gonna help take that pressure off, albeit temporarily, because there are more steps two or three years down the road to add another middle school, to add more elementary schools. So, it's going to be ongoing, but we still need to be fiscally responsible that we don't overbuild to the point that we have larger facilities than we need as well.
Bob, do you believe the district has the right plan in place to guide future facility decisions and needs?
I think that's a hard question, as was previously mentioned. I think the school district has done a good job on their ten-year plan. I think we're looking at the areas of growth. You watch the, you watch the community and you see where houses are being built. I don't know where all these people are coming from, but I'm glad they're coming. Where do we build? But, the one thing that comes to my mind is, the difficulty of it is, I can't sit here and I don't know anybody that can, that knows what is education gonna be in ten years? Is a traditional school as we see it today what we, what we're gonna want ten years from now? So, I think the focus on that, you know, canvassing the world, the country, the whatever, on, you know, where do educators see things going ten years from now? Is it gonna be a more virtual world than it is today? Classroom's gonna change? Those kind of things all have to go into the discussion on, you know, not just building a school, a brick and mortar, but what is gonna be required to educate the students of the future?
I do think the district has done a good job. The ten-year plan does look into how the community is growing, it looks into the partnerships and how we can best utilize space. I agree, portables are, I'm glad they're going away. We are continuing to grow, that's not a problem that's gonna go away anytime soon. So, looking at how we address that growth and looking at the different aspects, I'm a data person, so not just, yes, we're growing and we will probably need an eighth elementary soon, but how are we growing? Where do the district lines happen? And we have to look at the decisions we make from a community standpoint. When we start saying new buildings and who's gonna funnel into those buildings, that's a hard thing for families to change. We have to take that into consideration. We also have to look at the methods we're going to be teaching, what do the classrooms look like? What do the facilities need? What partnerships can we shift? Are all of our classrooms gonna be traditional? And then, look at the population growth because there's a decline in population, but we're a growing community. So, looking at that shift and how that's going to impact, are we looking at a bubble or are we looking at long-term growth? And taking all of that data into consideration when we make these decisions.
I believe we have a pretty strong facility plan at this time, which is constantly being revised and looked at to make sure that we're not missing new information. At this time, we have the two new buildings being built for the five-sixths. Yes, that'll alleviate some of the space needs at the elementary level and at the middle school. The thing that's interesting about what's happening is that we now have Westfield that is full and we have Indian Creek that is full. So, to say we can just build, say, an eighth elementary just over by where the new Boulder Peak is going to be, we have to really look at where we need the facility and is there a way that we can achieve this space need and all that without building immediately? We need to make sure that we're fiscally responsible about it, but we can't wait too long because we have to be thinking ahead and figuring out where we need to be and where, and how we get there.
I feel we're on the right track from the standpoint that when we didn't win the first bond issue, that sent a message. But, instead of crying about it, we got together and we knew we had to do something and we had to do something quick and the board responded to that. Yes, the portables were there, they put up, it cost us, but we had to because at that time, Indian Creek was a hundred and fifteen percent. That doesn't do the teacher any good and that doesn't do the students any good. We don't want students falling through the crap because they're in a classroom. We don't want students falling through the crack because they're in a classroom of 30 or 32. The one thing about our planning that the board does, that I feel is really solid, is we have a flexibility plan. It's not rigid. We are constantly analyzing and constantly seeing where the changes need to be in the district, for our students, where the growth is coming from. Yes, we are very happy that we are continuing to grow, but that ability to adjust is what a school board's all about. Okay? To see where we need to go and places to go, take care of our historic buildings, reduce the size and get it to a point where the students and the staff are the benefits.
Thank you. LaSheila, on the back of this year's ballot, voters will be requested to adopt an updated revenue purpose statement that specifies the use of dollars that the district will receive from the state of Iowa Save Fund. This is the penny sales tax that everyone already pays in the state of Iowa. Approving the revenue purpose statement does not increase taxes, it just directs how the district will spend these funds through the year 2050. Do you support the revenue purpose statement as presented on the ballot?
I would say at this point in time, if we are looking immediately, I would say yes. But long-term, you know, you have to think about any changes that you're making to a system, to a community or to any type of institute. You're probably not going to get it right the first time. You're going to have to constantly adjust, figure out what the needs are, and then also recalibrate to see if there's other funding opportunities. And so my thought would be initially, yes, but also I want to consider, you know, what are different opportunities that we can have for adjusting or even considering, I would say, from a financial aspect, what resources do we have that are revenues that we've saved in the event that we need to offset some costs? And the reason I say that is, working in the city government, you know, we've had to do our plan each year, but we also had money, had to have money saved to offset any additional revenue. And so I would like to know, you know, if we're making this decision, what other money do we have to support any additional changes needed in the future that would surpass the amount of funding we would see for the 20th year? You have to have revenues.
That's probably one of the most misunderstood revenue purpose statement. You know, that we feel like we pay our property taxes every day. We pay sales taxes every day and we feel all of that money is coming back to our district. Well, all of that money does not come back to the district. Your property taxes, a share of your property taxes go to the state of Iowa and they decide how much of that money is coming back to your district. It's given back by students, it's given back by, you know, so every school gets the same amount per student, whether they're a large district or a small district. So with that said, to try to even the playing field, that's where the silo one cent sales tax was so critical. If we did not have the one cent sales tax, a number of things would have happened. The first one is, is we wouldn't have the facilities we'd have. We'd have a lot more portables in our parking lots. The second item is, is, you know, some of the money, a percentage of the money went back to the consumers, back to the taxpayers in cutting our tax levy. Another piece of it went to technology. Those were the three major factors, but the biggest one was giving back for the tax revenue coming back to the consumer.
I'll just say, I'm glad this wasn't the first question. I'm not an expert on this particular subject, but I will say, funding in general, when you can get it back, I think as the community puts money into the big pot, be it the state, be it the federal level, and get it to come back to the community, I think is a good thing. I think the community is the best stewards of the money, so to bring anything back to the community and let the community be responsible to understand their priorities and where the funding should be spent, I would be totally in agreement of.
Britt, do you support the revenue purpose statement as presented on the ballot?
Yes, I do. It's a tax that we're already paying, it's just an extension. So voting no doesn't lower taxes, voting yes doesn't increase taxes. And approving it the first time out gives our district the flexibility to start moving forward on the next phases of the strategic plan. If it doesn't pass, we have to wait. If it passes, we can start moving forward. It means that there's a long time before we have to ask for another bond issue. It provides flexibility in funding. It provides more flexibility in looking at our strategic objectives, how we can solve problems at a district. The funding's there. We just need to approve being able to use it. And so yes, absolutely, it should be about yes.
Okay, I'd like to say ditto that because it is, it's a statement that directs how we would use the money that is coming back to us. And I think our taxpayers need to understand, including all of ourselves, that voting yes is a win for our district. Voting yes is a win for us as taxpayers in that we are not going to have additional property tax because we say yes for this revenue statement being okayed. I think it's a way for, since the penny tax is involved, it allows us, once that is extended, that we can borrow against some of that. So that if we build another elementary, that we can use some of that money in order to do so.
Yes, I do believe in this statement and I think it's imperative for district patrons to understand, the number one, as it's stated in there, that is the property tax issue. I think it's a communication issue. Having that on the ballot allows people that might not be involved in the district immediately, but they are taxpayers, and it is a statement by the board to assure them on the way and how that we are going to spend the money. With the state coming in with the 1% tax and the SAVE program is allowing us to do some things that we're already looking into for the betterment of our students and staff and the possibility of building another elementary school. That we can do that, some of those things without passing a bond issue and putting the burden, any more burden on the taxpayers. When we, as we look through different situations like that and we have Highway 13 and 151, we have building going on there and Medco's helping us push for those kinds of development that's going to give the tax relief to all of our taxpayers. And I'd like to see a lot more of those things going in there, out on 13 and 151, to help the district. The more we build out there, the more the district's going to get on taxes relief and I think that's going to be a good thing for everybody.
I think a 1% tax in the sales tax issue is a good thing. From everyone that talked before me, it's kind of silly to say no, right? We're either going to pay the taxes or we're going to pay the taxes. Whether we pay the 1% in the revenue statement or we raise property taxes, one way or another, we're going to pay it. This just seems to be an easier way to handle it and take the burden off. It becomes more of a use tax. People who spend more money will pay the higher tax at that point. Yes, of course, we need money. We need to educate students. Yes.
Thank you. I have another audience question. Barry, why do you think Linmar continues to be a destination district in the corridor? And what needs to be done to maintain this growth?
Well, it happened in 1993 when I moved to town. We were led this direction. We didn't oversee the Rapids, Iowa even was. We came from Grand Rapids, Michigan. But, you know, we came here because I had a ninth grader, a seventh grader and a fourth grader. And music was very important to one of my children and it was just a perfect landing spot for us and it's been a dream ever since. And that's really the reason why I want to be on the board, of course, is because it's been, it is a destination. It's kind of amazing to me, the number of people that even move within the city to come up here because they want their kids educated here. And I think it's because it's a high level of education. I think it's, you know, and I have to be careful, but you look at the advanced degrees that have come out of our school, the number of very successful people that have come out of our school. They come out of all schools, but I think there's a lot of retired teachers in the room and current teachers in the room that really need to pat themselves on the back because they've done a tremendous job. It's not an easy task being a teacher, it's not an easy project. And needless to say, every child has a different learning level and our district does a nice job of controlling that.
Yeah, I think to echo that thought, when I moved up here in the 90s, one of the key questions that we asked, you know, what's the best school district in the area? And Linmar popped up, bar none. I mean, granted, it was close to work as well, so that made it kind of convenient. So I think that a lot of people come here, again, as I mentioned earlier, look at the houses that are being built in our district. I mean, there's a reason that we're growing here. I think the school districts for young family is the number one reason that they ask for that. I remember when I was, prior to coming up here, you know, I always heard about Iowa schools and Iowa schools. And when I came up here, I kind of expected to see cray computers in every room and all sorts of fancy stuff because all we heard about was the Iowa schools and how good they were from my time in Georgia and Texas. But when I got up here, it wasn't that. It was all the community. It was the parents that cared, it was the environment that the teachers had and able to teach in, I think is what led to it being a great school district. So anything that we can do to keep that environment, the community involvement in the environment for learning to happen, I think is what we should do and the school district will continue to be one of the top ones in the state.
So we came here specifically for the district three years ago. Our son was four, he was coming up on kindergarten, where we lived was not what we had in mind and Linmar was at the top of the list. We came because you value education in this community and we wanted to be part of that. That's why I'm running, because I value education, I want to see our students succeed. What I think draws people to this community is that we're right next to a big city with all kinds of opportunities, but when you're here in Marion, it's small. I grew up in a small town, it feels like that here. It's full of opportunity, but everyone is family. Everyone treats each other like family and the students are like that. We're a big district, but it doesn't feel big. You feel at home here and the opportunities that are in this district. We invest in our students, we put forth the opportunities and there's a family support feel. That's why people will come here, that's why we're going to continue to be successful is because we value the people that are here. And the people are our greatest success.
Sandra, why do you think the district is a destination district and what needs to happen for that to continue?
Well, I mean, right away, I think of the people involved. We have excellent educators, we have tremendous staff in all respects. And anytime someone comes to visit one of the schools and they walk around and they talk with the people there, they're sold, just from the atmosphere and how people welcome them and all of that. I think it's really important for us to realize that. I also think that Linmar is a place that has great facilities. We have wonderful extra opportunities such as the choir you were talking about and music, music ideas and, I mean, all the performance things that we have. We also have an excellent education and we're known all over the state for our educators and how well we do. We have strong curriculum, we have an ability to provide extra help for students that need it, that have special needs, that kind of thing. We're known for those kinds of deals. And basically, our community, this is a community that feels like a family and it's been that way and it constantly is that, no matter what school you're in.
I feel Linmar is a destination district and there's several reasons for that. One of the big reasons is the staff. We, Sandra and I, I remember we were at a bond issue situation and we were asking people where they came from and people from Ohio came up and they told us, they said, we've looked at every single district in this whole metro area and our kids are going to go here. And I think that's a pretty definitive statement. When they move in here, we've, any place that you can dig a hole in our district, they're digging a hole. Okay? And they're building a house or a condo for their family. And the most important thing for a family is your kids. And people are doing that because of the staff and because of the teachers and because of the things that we have going for them in so many different areas. We had administrators at one of our recent board meetings and they blew me away because she told us that 85 to 90% of the students at the Linmar District are involved in some kind of extracurricular activity. And that says something when you've got time on your hands and they're getting involved in other issues because they want to be involved.
I think we can all agree that the Linmar District's pretty good, but I would say I want to be cautious and say, let's not pat ourselves on the back too far. What makes it the best school district in Iowa? I don't have all those answers, I don't know. But one of the things that I've talked about when I talk to voters is four main things. Number one, great programs for students. Number two, fiscal responsibility so we can grow the district and do the things that are important. Number three, something we haven't talked about tonight, safety and security of all of our students. And lastly, expecting great things from and for our staff and teachers. How do we become the best school district in Iowa? That's what makes us a destination. And all these things that the people up here said before me are true, but let's not lose sight that we're trying to create the greatest school district in Iowa. So it becomes a destination. So there's people fighting over houses to get in here. That's what I would like to see. I want my children to have the best education that we can possibly do.
I'd like to add to the conversation by saying, my husband and I, we moved here over 12 years ago and it was because of Rockwell Collins, he's an engineering manager there, and I soon got a job with the city. And one thing that I had a lot of pride for was working in the city, working in government. I was a heavy lieutenant in Louisiana Army National Guard and so I'm a government person. I operated, you know, scrapers, growers, front end loaders. And, you know, coming here, it reminded me of home. I'm from Louisiana and it just, the space, it's beautiful. It makes me think of the land of opportunities and having a sense of belonging. And so when we ended up moving to the district about a year ago, it was for opportunities specifically for me to be able to navigate my own environment with having a disability. And I love living in Cedar Rapids, but what really changed is I can actually, I actually feel like I belong in my home. And more importantly, I hope that that's the thought there, whether it's the school district, whether it's the community, just having that sense of belonging, I think that's what makes us great.
Home is not a place, it's a, home is not a destination, it's a place in your heart. Bob, how do, how does today's education system need to evolve to best equip students to complete, or excuse me, compete in our global economy?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure, sure.
I'm just kidding because it's a stalling tactic. You know, I think it's a, for me anyway, it's somewhat of a, both an easy and tough question at the same time. I look at from, as working for a technology company here in the area, knowing what we look for in new employees are things that are, you know, more, let's say, IT-based, more computer-based, engineers that have, you know, kids that have like a technical background of some kind. But having to say that, there's a lot of other skills that we also look for. There's other people in the company besides just engineers that are required to get the job done. I think what's important as we look forward going forward, as I'd mentioned earlier, what are the skills that the students are going to need, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now? I don't have the easy answer for that one. I know what the expectation is, people that can think logically, people that know how to communicate, people that know how to do research. I think they can do most anything in life. So if we put them on that track, whether it's a virtual education or the current way, I don't think is as important as making sure we understand when they leave, they have the talents and the skills that we expect that they'll need to have to get a job.
It's tough because every day, the expectations change for our kids. How we educate them, everything changes. The workforce, my son's in first grade, 70% of the jobs that will be available when he is an adult don't exist yet. So how do we prepare for what doesn't exist? And I think that comes back to our people and how we treat our kids. Technology will solve certain things, but what we have to focus on is, what does the future workforce look like? And for me, that comes to diversified educational opportunity. So not every classroom's going to look the same because not every student's future's going to be the same. We need to be flexible as we move forward from year to year, evaluating how the workforce is changing, how career opportunities are changing, look for those partnerships in the community and then invest in our staff so that they have the ability to move on a dime and say, okay, this is new, we need to pivot and be able to teach our kids in a new way. We don't know what the future looks like because it changes too fast. So what we need to be able to do is be flexible in how we approach it and look for those opportunities when they present themselves.
I think going forward, we have to pretty much think out of the box in the sense that we can't keep everything the same. We have to be willing to move and change. You plan and then you punt sometimes because you have to be flexible. When, as a teacher, we did that all the time. You come up with these wonderful, grandiose things and thought there was... You come up with these wonderful, grandiose things and thought they were wonderful and in the middle of it, you realize you needed to change. And I think that's really important. We need to have our spaces be flexible. They need to maybe look different than they do today. We need to have them technology-rich. We need to encourage problem solvers with, with students so that they can solve whatever problems they come, come about in the real world. We have to be careful to teach soft skills so they know how to communicate with people because we spend so much time with machines and with phones and all that kind of thing. Flexibility and creativity has to be pushed big time. You have to allow them to fail because if they fail, then they learn from it and they can move on. And I think we have to provide professional development to our staff and that for the new things that are coming up. Allow them to take off and try things and if it doesn't work, be able to rebound and go again.
I'll get there. When you, when you're talking worldwide and global and you look at Collins Avionics and some of the areas that we have in, in our area, you, you know that they're, they're very flexible in where they go. They're worldwide. They, they bring that information back. And this is going to sound redundant from what some of the people have said, but the educational system isn't just structured and this is the way we're going to do it. We're always going to do it that way. You have to have the flexibility and the ability to adjust with a growing world, economy and, and jobs basis. And we have some things that, new learning areas as far as different ways of learning. We have people leaving school and going to Big and we have apprenticeships and we have online learning and we have a lot of opportunities. You need that for the staff also because the technique that a teacher uses today is not the way they necessarily did it when I was there. Okay? They're, it's an ever-changing world and not only do the students have to have that flexibility and to adjust, and sometimes it's really quick, the staff has to be able to do that also. And I think the professional development things that we have, we don't want to do the same thing and just put another name on it. We got to have staff development that deals with our vision of the students going forward.
Jeffrey, how do you think today's education system needs to evolve to best equip our students for the future?
As I alluded to a little bit earlier and I'll, and I'll say it again, I, I think as education evolves, we need to look at developing partnerships, not as much publicly, but privately. We have a great need in our society for engineers and STEM education. We have some great opportunities within our community to work with Collins Aerospace or GoDaddy or John Deere to help these students and go out and do some learning in the real world to see if this is something they want to get into and they want to do. We have to evolve. Evolution is, is part of life and our teachers need to evolve. They need the support to do that. They need the time to do that as well. Also, I think another great aspect of that is I know that the district is moving to have a, having every student have a computer. Technology is the way of the future, whether we like it or not, but those soft skills that was alluded to earlier, as an employer here in town, my greatest challenge was hiring people that can have a, that can communicate and talk to people. We need to be able to teach our students to, to communicate and have real conversations with people and look somebody in the eye and have a conversation. Those things are important too.
I'd say that in sitting in on one of the strategic planning feedback sessions, one thing that was very apparent is that, one, there's an opportunity to support our teachers in a changing environment. And, you know, that involves, one of it is dealing with cultural diversity and having a, a sense of how do we support our families that may not speak English where there may be a cultural difference. For example, my husband and I coached the first tech robotic team. Our students were called Black Engineers Tomorrow. We made it to state each year. When we tried to interact with the family, it was very eye-opening to see that, you know, the culture was different in a sense that, you know, there were gender roles that were, you know, that were strongly held. On top of that, most of the families, the fathers worked outside of the home. And so what we ended up finding out is, as far as from a, a language aspect, the students were put in the middle, you know, culturally, they were given power because they could speak both languages. And it did have an impact on the particular interactions with our students. So we had to take a step back and say, "Okay, how can we adjust to make sure that this family, through this process, feel like they belong, not just the student?"
There are a number of factors involved with that and I'm proud to say I was part of setting up the, the mission statement, the inspire learning, unlock potential and empower achievement. And with that said, we need to keep our focus on the future. We need to do social, emotionally learning. And then we also have to understand that everybody, all children have distractions, whatever that might be. So as we move forward and when we, we talk about that, all of us have to have education every day. I'm probably closer to retirement than most people in, on the group, but, you know, I went to a class last week for six hours just because there's just constant learning, ongoing learning. It's really interesting, a few weeks ago, I talked to a lady and her role, she's a teacher, and her role was asked to come and be a professor at Kirkwood. And her role is, is to do social learning. And I first thought social networking. She said, "No, social learning." There's a number of businesses in the area that have gone to Kirkwood and said, "We need help" because people are so stuck on education, they're so stuck on, on technology, so stuck on teamwork and all of this and trying to get everything done, but socially, they can't communicate with the people they work with. And I think that's going to be a real challenge moving forward as well.
Thank you. Britt, do you believe the district is well-equipped with the appropriate support staff and infrastructure to support a one-to-one technology environment? Does anything need to change?
To support one-to-one technology, I honestly, I don't know what the support staff looks like in the IT sector. I think overall, the class size and infrastructure is, should be something we should continue to look at. From experience, I know the ratio of students to school counselors is completely out of, out of, it's over. The recommendation is one, one counselor to every two-hundred-and-fifty students and we're averaging between four-hundred and five-hundred students per counselor. I don't know what the class sizes look like, but I know the district is working really hard to keep them at good levels. I think that's, that's an area we can strive to work on and improve is how we support our staff and the ratios. That goes into infrastructure, making sure that not only do we have buildings to fit, but that we have adequate sizes so that we can have effective educators. If you put too many kids in a classroom, they're not going to be as engaged, they're not going to get the attention they need and then we lose out, not only academically, but with that social, emotional support and with all of the other support structures we need within the building. Technology, I don't have enough information specifically on, on that to answer.
Well, we have a wonderful support staff for technology. The problem is that the, there's always with new things like our sending everything out on one-to-one, there's always problems that occur. We just have to have great staff that is available to go out and help. Nothing's worse than be given new technology, new programs and they give you professional development of an hour or two, then you're the expert, the next day, you're supposed to be able to do it. And then when you're in the midst of it on your own, by yourself, you have no technical people that you can call. So I think there's probably some glitches out there with this new one-to-one going out. I've heard of a few and I think that they're being addressed. I think that's true with anything new. I think it's just important that we need to support the students and the teachers with, when we do this and that we can't forget that if we have them in front of this one-to-one, this computer all the time, that they still have to be able to communicate things to each other.
I think the districts were, worked really hard at equipping our students with one-on-one. We have a diverse student body and there are some lower economic families that we have and that we are pushing really hard for them to get that technology so they're on the same, same platform as every other student in the district. And I think that is, you know, a feather in our cap that we keep pushing for that. Just to kind of support what Sandra was saying, that the problem with, anytime you have anything new, there's always going to be a glitch. But we have some really nice people that are working towards eliminating those glitches as fast as we can. And as a family unit, you know, that open communication is always continuously going on and on all the time. That if there is a mistake, let's hear about it, let's, let's deal with it, let's find out the solution and move on. And I think one of those things with the one-on-one is that allows everybody to, to do what we all really want to do and that is better communication and that allows the student, whether at home, on an illness, or in the building, to be able to do that.
I like Britt, not sure about this issue. I have not heard much about technology. But what I did hear the other night when I spoke to the teachers' union was a, a lack of buy-in from them, from board policies. And I wonder, is the district doing enough to get the buy-in from teachers and staff when we implement a new policy? As I said earlier, I want to build the best school district in, in Iowa. I think we as a board will have some responsibility to partner with the staff, with technology partners, with teachers in order to do that and not put down mandates to them and say, "We're doing this," but work with them, "How can we best do this?" Now, the other side of that coin is we don't want to do paralysis by analysis. We need to move forward and go forward, but we need to go, do with the forethought and the buy-in of teachers and staff to make sure that we are where we are and we're doing what we need to do to fulfill the mission.
I'd like to add, just by saying, I, I fully agree with the concept of supporting our students. I also want to make sure that, you know, on my end, my, my focus is really with students with disabilities and making sure that we're breaking down barriers. And so for that particular, for those particular issue, that particular issue, it's really looking at what's best for the student at whatever place they're in at their life. I always think about when it comes to disabilities, especially from a, a school aspect, you know, you have a student that may go out, have a good weekend and something happens and now that kid was in an accident and they're not the same. There almost be a situation, could also be a situation where, you know, something happens and that student now has a chronic illness and they're not able to communicate as they would have been prior to having that incident. Not only does the student, the students facing the challenge, their families are as well as their educators. And we have to take that into account when we're looking at what's the best for our students. The student body is going to change, but how do we make sure that we are supporting students so they can be economically compatible in a global, global environment? And some of it's just making sure that we can support them in a way where they're at, with the needs, with their needs, particularly, I do get concerned about kids with, with disabilities.
I think the main part about the question was technology, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so one-on-one technology, of course, is, is very important. I think once in a while, the, the students, the children and some parents have more of a challenge. If I have an issue with my phone or with my laptop or with my iPad, I just hand it to my three-year-old granddaughter and she fixes it. So I just think it's an ongoing issue. But moving forward, you know, we've always talked about this, you know, there's been many, many school districts in the area that have had all computers for every student in the classroom and it's been wonderful. But just as soon as we do that, then they're outdated or they're old or, or something happens. So, so it's, it's from our technology folks in our district and the leadership of the district, that's an ongoing challenge because we want to make sure that we have all of our students up to that level where they want to be. And of course, needless to say, sometimes we can't get that at home, so we have to get it at school.
I'm sorry, in this case, I really do need you because I've lost lock on what the red light question was.
No, no problem. Do you believe the district is well-equipped with the appropriate support staff and infrastructure to support a one-to-one technology environment? Does anything need to change?
I would, I would surmise that given the budget issues and the concerns that we've had and making sure we've got classroom staff, that the IT department is probably understaffed to do a, a big rollout like this. So without trying to wander around and answering the question, I, I, I see two things. I think when I look at this district and look at the amount of people that are willing to give their time, whether it's on the board or whether it's just volunteering at the student, at the schools, I look at employers like Collins Aerospace. I think there's got to be a way of putting them together when you're rolling out technology, take advantage of the people willing to, to volunteer and help, especially when you're rolling things out, there's a lot more work rolling it out than sustaining it. So I think there's probably opportunities again to work with, with the community on your rolling things out. I will stay on rolling things out. My background on working with a lot of programs, we spend a lot of time talking about planning and the risk. If you're going to do a big program like this, spending the time to plan it and think about the risks that are going to occur in front of you and be ready to mitigate those and be proactive is better than being reactive and rolling things out and finding out that things don't work.
Thank you. Unfortunately, our time is nearing the eight o'clock stop. And so I have a final question. We're going to change the format just a little bit. This time, I'd like to start at LaSheila and work this way. You had to do it the other way around earlier. We'd like to provide an opportunity for each candidate to provide final closing remarks. Tell us your closing thoughts, please.
My closing thought is, I have to admit, my husband and I aren't fortunate enough to have kids, period, at this point in time. And so I want you all to, to give me an opportunity to contribute in a way that's meaningful to us, even though we don't, we're not given that opportunity right now. I've worked in city government, I, you know, went to college, got the advanced education, you know, did the National Guard thing and worked in the public sector. People like me do need to be involved and we want to be involved. You know, for me, I, I don't work a traditional nine-to-five, but I can definitely stay up, make sure that I'm committed, that I, I figure out how we, I work with individuals, if I'm serving on the board, working with individuals so we can figure out how to best serve our students. Because there are people that care, that may not have a student there, but they want to see what's in the best interest of all of us.
First off, thank you for being here and being a part of this. Thank you for putting the event on. I believe people get into this, as all of us do up here, in order to help serve our communities and make it a better place to be. So with that being said, I think you have a wide range of candidates up here you could vote for and support the community. You have candidates up here who've been around for, for quite a while and have been doing the job. I look at myself as somebody who doesn't like the status quo, that wants to move things forward, that what we're doing now, it may be okay, but is there a better way to do it? As I said earlier, I want to build the best school system in Iowa by looking at great programs for students, being fiscal responsible, taking care of our kids and expecting a lot from our teachers and for our teachers. I'd appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you for having me.
I've been on the board four years. Been in the district a very long time. The reason I got involved in the first place is the same reason I'm here tonight and that is students and staff. I believe in, in this district, I believe in the learning process. As a board member, I've learned a lot. I will continue to learn, just like our students, we want them to be lifelong learners. That's no different for me than any other board member. It is a continuous process. It's a changing world and we have to change with it and we want to make those changes that are the most important for our students and staff. We've got a lot of things going for us, but we're gonna, not going to set on our laurels. We're going to keep continuing, working for those students, working for that staff. And if there's anything that we can change and adjust to better their education, then I want to be a part of that. My son graduated from Linmar and I want, and so I have no ulterior motive, but to try to support the students and the parents that, that I know and have had in class and those that I will meet, meet in the future. Thank you.
I've thought a lot about this and what I can say is, I'm running again to be an active part of directing our future at Linmar. I will continue to listen to people's concerns as I have all four years throughout the district and assist appropriately. I will govern- I will govern as a forward thinker to address the challenges that come forth, and there's, there's a lot of them, and we have to think about them with all perspectives in mind. I bring the perspective of a parent, teacher, and a board member that's been very active in all the aspects of the job this, in the last four years. But the bottom line is, I care about Linmar. Okay? I, I care about our students, and that they receive top-notch education, just like all of us have come to expect. You know, I care about our staff and value that they, the value that they do bring to Linmar, and why we are known as one of the most excellent school districts in the state. I care about where we're headed, and I want to be a part of leading the way. So I'm asking for your vote on November 5th, to become part of the Linmar School District again, while always thinking about what's best for our students. I will try to lead with passion and experience. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming as well. For me, there's nothing more important than education. It's not because my son is in first grade and has all of his years ahead of him, it's because it's what I've dedicated my professional life to, it's what I do with my spare time. I have a passion for developing education and seeing our students succeed. Being on the school board would be an incredible honor, to represent the community, to provide service to the community. It's going to require a lot of hard work. Linmar has so many opportunities that are going to present themselves over the next few years, but those opportunities come with big decisions, and it's going to take a group of people that are dedicated to asking the hard questions, to having a little bit of debate, to talking out all the different avenues and options that are available, and then making the right, responsible, and efficient, and effective decisions, to make sure that we are successful for decades to come. So yes, I'm asking for your vote, because I want to see us succeed, I want to see our students succeed. I think the future of our community depends upon the success of our students, and that all starts with who you have represent you, and how we build an educational system in our community. So thank you for coming, and thank you for your time.
Again, thanks to everybody for their time, and for MEDCO, and for you moderating. It's, I'll tell you, sitting up here, I, I just get impressed on the quality of people in the community, and the people that are willing to spend their time, both running for the board, and as I had mentioned earlier, volunteering. I think everybody's intent is in the right place. We all know what our objective is, is to build the best school district that puts our children in the best position to be successful in their life, whatever, whatever that path may be, be it college, be it trades, be it whatever. I think my part of the school district, or if I'm fortunate enough to get onto the school board, would be to work with the team that's there. I, I think that they've done a great job. I just want to be part of the team, help them condescend, maybe bring a differing opinion on, because of my background, not being in education, but more in business. And with, and with that, that thing, have the, the healthy discussion, the healthy debate, whatever term you want to use, but make sure we're being judicious with the funding, doing the best we can with every dollar that we have, but again, not losing the focus of why we're here.
I personally like to ask for your vote as well. I want, I want to thank each of you for coming, because an hour and a half of your time could be better, well-spent at home as well, so that shows the commitment we have. Nick, I want to thank you for coordinating and your staff. And, you know, it's really a compliment to our district, there are seven of us up here running for four spots. That's really a compliment, because many, many school districts have to ask people to run, because they want a spot filled. And this whole group has a passion to do that. All of us have different skill sets. This is, in, in the last four years have gone quite well as a district. I feel I bring a lot of business sense to the board, I feel like I bring a lot of financial sense to the board. And, and, you know, we talk about fiscal responsibility and all of that, but, you know, my, our main role, if I have the opportunity to serve again, is to oversee, monitor, set policy, follow policy, and, and just to, just to keep things progressing and, and keep everything on track. So, once again, thank you for coming. I would welcome the opportunity to serve again, and, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
I echo Bob's feelings in the state of Iowa, in that many, if not most, school board elections, the positions go unopposed. So in closing, on behalf of the Marion Economic Development Corporation, MEDCO, and the Marion Chamber of Commerce, thank you for attending tonight's forum. As you know, the decisions made by our local school boards have great impacts that critically shape policy and overall quality of our local K-12 education systems and a broader community development. As voters, the job is now up to you. Please remember to cast your vote on Tuesday, November 5th. And a special thank you, once again, to our candidates, and thanks to each of you for attending tonight.